...away, so that they open the second meeting in April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three at nine AM. Uh, first up is appointments, of which we don't have any this morning. Uh, and the next item is Phil is going public works director as a presentation of one town hall. Well, thank you. So I try to do this as quick as possible, but I'm here.
Yes, sorry.
So the purpose of this is just to go over some of the planned projects for the remainder of the year. And some future projects, just in close up conversation with the partner in building responsible parties. This is what we're generating, so um, it's kind of twofold, just to inform people what's going on, but also to double check with everyone to make sure that we've captured what the most important things are. Um, so we'll be doing what I just said, and then also discussing funding sources for some of these four artists. And then I just wanted to hit on some of the recurring themes you can see in these slides. Um, one of the first ones is a unitil energy audit. Um, we're working with budget committee and myself have been in contact with unitil regarding them coming out and looking at some of our not so new buildings, obviously the fire station and library are the gold standard in energy efficiency. Uh, this town hall, not so much. Uh, if you've ever walked in those back stairs, you're gonna see we have an insulation problem. If you've ever tried to turn this, the two furnaces that constantly go out, you know what I'm talking about. Um, so those are planned for, and they'll be called out on different buildings. The other thing is propane conversions. Um, we have three oil burning appliances remaining, or I guess four if you count the two in this town hall. Um, the intention is is to switch to propane. Propane is cleaner, propane is cheaper, and we've actually lost our oil service commission, so um, that's where that's going. Solar plan and considerations, um, if I'm understanding the intentions of the uh, solar committee, they want to focus more on rooftop solar, so that's going to be things that need to be taken into consideration. Uh, we don't have any immediate needs for roof replacement, I would be great daily barn, but uh, we put the next five to ten years, there are multiple roofs that are gonna need to be replaced, so if we're putting solar on them, that's a consideration we need to take into account. Uh, there's a few different LED upgrade programs, one of them being the town hall, a couple of different buildings. Um, most of those are subsidized through unitil, but not fully covered, and we'll get into that. Um, water testing, that's something that a lot of the occupants of buildings have brought up, that um, the fire station, need to get a full test done on that, but also uh, we're spending a lot of money on bottled water, so the intention would be to conduct water testing, at least on an annual basis, to stop having to do that. And then the final recurring item is uh, we're looking at signing a service contract for HVAC. Um, we're getting to the point where there's so much tech all in back to these now, that we don't have the number to call the guy at two in the morning who can fix the computer. It's not looking a wire and jumping up to something else, just to get it to work. And when it's negative eleven, we need our heating systems to work fully and functionally, so. Um, and as I know, these are plans only, no guarantees, unless you're the first project, I can't guarantee what you're gonna get done, so thanks out. First one up, uh, is the rec center. So thanks for this year, we'll be a vegetated burn to capture storm wall coming off of the parking lot. Um, this is something we have to do through our MS school permit, that we have to conduct certain number of projects on town properties. Um, this one is our first one that we have to do, and this will basically catch all of the runoff from the park you want and one side of the building before it runs right off and it'll leak. Uh, it should be a pretty easy lift. Uh, we'll be putting an entry vestibule into the rec center. Uh, for the past two or three years, we've spent a couple of seven thousand dollars on a tent. Uh, pretty sure we could do this project for around seven, eight thousand dollars, and we'll have to do it once. So that will be coming up, and then uh, the picture there is the Scott and Stones playground. We had a uh, water line put up through to do some upgrades on there. We've spent that money on um, some of the apparatus for the playground. We've already purchased the materials to replace a lot of the boards and make it safer. So that will be one of our big projects this year. Uh, looking into the future, there is an outbuilding that is used for storage. Uh, also was used for its electrical capability, gonna have to make a decision on that as to whether we repair that, has some silk damage, or if we demolish it, that'll keep the electrical point out there. Um, pickleball's been something that's been popular, and there's been a request for more pickleball areas. What we're looking at is a paved area that could potentially contain two pickleball courts, and then in the winter it could serve as a skating area that we could flood out if it ever goes freeze again. Um, we could have a stating now. And then everybody's favorite, the siding on the front of that building that wasn't washed, we're gonna get that fixed.
Phil, did you see a little bit of water?
I did, uh, we actually had some water ball, uh, filling apparatus donated to us, but unfortunately they weren't complete, so we have to buy the other half of that. But um, because the rec center is a certified drinking water source, uh, it's tested by the DES quarterly. Um, that would be the first one that for, the target there on that is for camp, that kids can just bring their own water bottle there and fill water from that source, so we're not going through bottled water. Um, yeah. Police station. Um, so you can see us working on the carport there, got a few things over there over the past year. Uh, made a file storage room, then we did some upgrades to the locker room. Um, that freed up the garage, the former garage space, which will be converted to a training room. We'll need some mini splits in there for climate control, closing off the uh, the garage doors, and then we'll have to put some more electric outlets, just so it's more conducive to a training environment. Um, also there would be an interview room. Just don't imagine they're looking at job candidates in there though. Um, and then we have got a primer coat on the carport, we'll be painting that this year, and then this will be one of the buildings we're doing an energy audit on. Uh, there's kind of three heating systems that are competing there, that have been added on to, so we'd like to get an outside auditor to come in and just, they'll look at insulation, doors, windows, and heating systems, just how, how they're working together, so that'll be the purpose of that. Um, future projects are, the parking lot, we've obviously done very good work in there, so it's gonna need to be resurfaced at some time, and then this will be one of the candidates for solar in the future. We built the carport specifically so it was oriented south, so we wish to put that on there, could be.
Can you sell it on top, or could that also be the hybrid garage? Because of proximity or?
It certainly could, it seems, I mean, most of these are just gonna back through the utility, it's not gonna, yeah, it's just basically.
Yeah, not like, it's main, or a camp.
Rather than be a directory. I'm missing anything on my drill?
No good.
Cell station. I figured I could take, like, pretty pictures of all these buildings, but I gotta show the board, since we're talking about what could be done. Um, so this is one of the ones we pulled the uh, the old boiler from the central station before it was demolished, and we'll be converting this one to liquid propane. Um, has this building really, I mean, has the original furnace in there, I'm guessing? So that's older than pretty much everybody in the room. Um, and the insulation was put in when oil was eighty cents a gallon, so. Um, we're hoping with the energy audit, we can kind of figure out what we need to do when there to make that more efficient. Which shouldn't be hard, because that building doesn't get opened a lot, so it should be able to retain heat. Um, the access control over there needs to be worked on, and then we're gonna be painting the building, you can see in that picture as well, um, why that needs to take place. Uh, the roof on that isn't bad, but it is gonna have to be aggressive, probably within five years. And then uh, one thing I forgot to put on here, that dovetails into the solar, is uh, the used car lot on one twenty-five had come to full planning board, and then they went through the application, I believe, but there's a hundred by hundred law behind that, that they're supposed to give the fire station. So um, we need to look at getting that completed, and then we could probably take down some trees and make that a candidate to help solar. Crystal building. Um, we allocated some money for electrical upgrades last year. Now that the heating season is over, we have the old, the other old boiler from the central fire station to go in there. Um, so that'll be work that we're performing, we're gonna cut that out, and then the intent would be to have the contractor, PK Dave, come in and hook up the other one, and wow the electrical. We're trying to schedule the work for the upgrades on the building to take place at the same time as the boiler, so we don't have to pay uh, Tom about twice, he can just be there when needed, he'll be right on scene. Um, the flashing around the toilet, we had that roof done about four years ago, I believe. He had noted that as a potential kind of failure. The gentleman will be coming back um, to look at the current state of it, some pieces of it, I guess, came off in the wind a couple of weeks ago, so. He's aware of the issue, he didn't feel it was a huge problem, but we're gonna have to figure something out with that. Um, this will also be one of the ones that we'll be getting an energy audit. Obviously, historical preservation in this building is paramount, but um, if there are things that we can do in non-public areas that can help us cut down on the heating building there, that's something we need to look at. And then uh, we have to move the stained glass windows, and we'll be assisting on their reinstallation when that comes up. And then uh, as far as future projects, at some point that driveway's gonna have to get repaved. Public parks building, this is the uh, personal hazardous waste table that we hosted on there in October. Um, so radio base station, this was discussed to come out of ALFA funds, but if anyone attended, uh, which same heritage services there, we have a um, issue maintaining radio connectivity. So the intention would be to have a radio base station, it's actually already wired for an antenna, it just needs the unit itself uh, to be put in there. We'll be putting a designated truck washing point, um, just as we deal with salt and things like that, we have a runoff area, so it goes into a catchment that we can maintain. The LED upgrades, it's a program through unitil, so I believe they're about half the price as they would be, and it's working out nicely, because those lights are starting to crack out on us from the original build of this building. And then um, we'll be doing an energy audit on this, obviously this building having large doors that open all the time, it'll probably be minor things that we gain on that, but I think it's worth doing. As far as future projects, um, the salt storage facility is going to need replacement within the next two years. A lot of the uh, imagine we need salt and metal nails, those eventually wear out, so that's something we're gonna have to look at. Uh, the other thing is a makeup air system for the garage bay, steam floor heating, so when the guys are going in and out multiple times during a storm and bringing cold trucks in, system sometimes struggles to keep up with that. And then uh, this is also another candidate for solar, given the orientation of the roof. And then, given the number of additions that have been done over the years, the paved areas would need to be resurfaced at some point.
Phil?
Yep.
We have a fifty watt uh, radio for in, I think it's brand new in the container.
I guess so, there is a fifty watt, we need a hundred watt, in case that didn't happen, the capability, but I appreciate that. Uh, the maintenance farm, we're gonna be looking every side of the building. This building was put up, I believe, in the late sixties, and it's the original siding on there. Uh, if you look around the bottom of it, it's basically rotting away, which doesn't do well for keeping heat and craters out. So um, the waste oil furnace, we just had serviced two weeks ago, and then probably broke a week later. Uh, this was, a fix was done on this about ten years ago, that basically we were told that it'll last a week, or ten years, well, we got ten years out of it, but I think I'm kind of the end of squeezing that thing along. Um, this is another one, we're gonna be doing an energy audit, and then uh, long term, the roof on this is about fifteen years old, probably within the next five years, that's gonna have to be redone. And then the bathrooms, the fixtures are kind of falling apart after however many years it's been in there.
Phil?
Yeah?
Are your storage system enough waste oil of amounts of maintenance supply?
Um, so we've gotten uh, not just from the household collection day, but also jobs truck model, because they have so many vehicles with fresh oil coming in there, we've worked out a view with them, that when they have extra oil, they can bring it to us, so, and obviously it was a warmer winter, but um, we didn't have to run, the only time we had to run the heating oil furnace was when the oil furnace was broken. So we had more than enough oil to make it through, so let's, and that's something I'd like to look at for the makeup air system and the other barn, is potentially doing the waste oil furnace for that, but something to look at long term. Uh, the grace daily barn, that would be, uh, there was a moose plate grant that uh, the heritage commission got approved for. And um, we'll be doing a lot of the drainage and foundation improvements. We'll be pulling in a consultant for the soil repair, but we're gonna try and perform as much of this as we can in-house, just given the uh, the majority of the problem is the drainage up there. That's why the building's moving, and that's kind of what's caused the roofing issues, so um, we should be able to, I believe most of the folks we got were over forty thousand dollars, so if we can do a lot of this, that should take a lot of this thing out of that, and use most of the grant money versus uh, the capital reserve fund or the capital improvements lineup. Um, and then next year, the year after, we'll just be having kind of a more of a walkway there, you know, so people can actually get in and out of there when we have that open for events. Library. Um, I don't think this is gonna require a full energy audit, but I do think some of the uh, hardware, as far as the heating systems and cooling systems, should be reviewed by that company, they are ten years old at this point, so it'll be worthwhile to have someone just take a look at them. Um, looking forward, I know there had been some questions about an outdoor pavilion potentially being put up there, so they can have outdoor reading events, and then there's a uh, this is more of a conservation commission thing, but there's a, they wanna connect a trail to one of the town forests nearby. The fire station, again, water testing is needed for there, that the whole system put in place, and it should be fine, but we should probably verify that before the uh, warranty period runs out. We have some trees and other landscaping to do on the boundary line, and then we're gonna oversee it along, just to make sure that fills in where it didn't quite go last year. Um, this was the one that was presented by revision energy in the solar committee, as far as having a solar array on that roof, it was built specifically for that, so most of the work on that's been done. But um, I guess that would be one that we just need to figure out where that's gonna get funded from, on any of the solar projects. Town hall, this is the big one, anybody recognize that one? Um, so this will be the one where an energy audit is conducted. The front stairs, we're gonna be putting actually barricades on the center stair portion, because that's the most uneven, and we'll also be putting signage. Um, it kind of depends on the day when you hit it, whether it's teed up or not. Wasn't too bad this year with the frost, but those are basically gonna have to be ripped out and completely redone. Uh, security cameras, the board signed that, and that came out of ALFA funds, and I actually just got a call this morning that they are in, and hopefully next week those will be completed. The audio visual upgrades that were signed last year out of ALFA funds, um, we're still waiting on microphones. We still, I've sent them a punch list of all the things that needed to be done, but I am not under the impression that it's gonna solve our problems, as far as not being able to hear things in here. Uh, what we're planning on doing is just renting a scissor lift to bring in here, and we're gonna put fabric panels up on the ceiling, and we'll do some of the uh, soundboards on the wall, that we painted to match the wall, but I think that'll probably have a lot more impact than new speakers and new microphones. It'll just kind of break the sound from echoing. And that should be two microphones and some cloth, so it'll be a lot cheaper than the other guy. Um, as you can see, we have fluorescent lights in here, so this is uh, one of the ones that we have an LED upgrade program that we're working on right now. Um, mechanical engineering plan, I would like to request a, a, a chunk of the ALFA money was set aside for the town hall specifically, and I think the first step in that is bringing in a mechanical engineer to design a heat system for this place. It's unfortunately been about three different good ideas caught together, and it doesn't work properly. Um, different rooms are at different temperatures, and everybody's fairly unhappy with it. I, you know, when we're opening windows in the middle of January or July, because it's too cold and too hot in the wrong seasons, we need to just get that figured out, and the first step in that would be having a professional come in and just assess the whole situation and get this plan to move forward. Um, the other part of that would be this room, instead of folding tables and gritty floor and whatever floor furniture we've managed to wrangle over the years, I think this would be something that we look at, getting a little more uniform and getting the floor refinished. Which brings us to future projects. Um, so in looking at it, I think one of the big reasons the stage still remains is there's a lot of utilities run through there, but we've come up with a plan to basically keep the facade on the stage, but make the backside a meeting room, to have space for uh, human services to store anything they need to in there, and then the buildings and grounds crew can have a storage area as well. The meeting room itself would um, allow smaller committees to meet outside of this giant room. Uh, if the board wishes to go to a non-public session, then not every word they say can be heard right beside the door. And then if we are going to move forward with phased renovations, it would allow us an area to divert the public to go still in the town hall, but they can utilize the meeting room as their temporary office space while their, their area is getting worked on. Um, some of those renovations include service window renovations, the town clerk has approached me about bringing that out to three windows, so he's gonna use the lovely picture there. Um, and having the workstation right at those windows. In addition to that, the uh, government permitting window was put in as a temporary kind of fix for COVID. I think there are certain things that need to take place as far as moving sprinklers, and um, making that window a little more permanent than it is right now. The bathrooms, if you bet on the men's bathroom, it's very creepy how it's set up. I don't know what the female bathroom looks like, but I think we need a little more uh, ADA accessible and not so creepy narrow hallway going on there. Um, obviously the insulation on the backside of this building is a big thing. For egress, we have to leave these doors open, but there is not a stitch of insulation from that wall out. So if you were going back there in January, it's about twenty degrees out there, must be doors are open. Uh, this building has grindormous ivies on top of it, so it is a really good candidate for solar on the roof. Uh, the parking lot here needs to be refinished at some point, mostly, most likely with some speed bumps built in. And then on the roof, the cooperlet, when it comes time to redo the roof, we should look at removing the cooperlet and making it just a standalone item on top of the roof, not tied in from the bottom, because it is one of our largest points of leakage. And if we pull it off, brought it down, rebuilt it, and put it back up there, I think that would solve a lot of that. In addition to that, the flashing around the outer edge on the top is uh, in need of attention, so that would be done around the same time when that roof is redone. Other projects we have going on, this with regards to the uh, this area, Plains traffic plan. Plains Cemetery Wildhead, um, the plains has been designated national historic site, so we're gonna be redoing the wildhead there, and that'll actually have a plaque on there, uh, recognizing it as such. We are currently looking at a uh, recyclable collection point at the state shed, place where we can take cattle bull, which is our highest grossing uh, recyclable item, and we've worked out a system with police management where that can be done, where we did direct credit for those. And then the other thing would be to collect the last there, which is our highest cost disposal item, even though technically it's recyclable, it really isn't, they just grind it up and throw it on top of the landfill. Um, so if we can collect that specifically, it's very heavy, and it counts against us quite a bit. And then uh, the reason I had a bolt launch on there is we're going for the bolt launch grant, looking at potentially putting a uh, a dock out there, redoing the fencing, and getting a more solid uh, launch itself, precast somewhere in stateside, so. I know that was a lot of information, but. I'm putting a question.
Yep. So also, uh, obviously you must have some, you're running a schedule for times, but I'm wondering about all the places with, um, food markets available, the capital reserve fund for, for some of this work, and looking forward, I mean, the capital reserve funds have, have, I really love this. Uh, you know, the goal is that they're always continuing to fund them. With some of the projects, I'm guessing that the, the, the future?
So the cap, the, the building capital reserve fund was intended to offset, we need a roof or a heating system, you know, larger items, um, we did request and, and granted in our budget, there's a capital improvement line item. So a lot of the, most of what we did at the PD that wasn't donated, came out of that capital improvement line item. Um, but the things at the grace daily barn is, the discussions were that that would come out of the reserve fund, the work that we do over there, and then the grant would offset the rest of it. The heating system should be minimum cost, because we actually have the, the systems, it's just the labor to get them installed. So we're self-performing as much of that as possible. Um, I, I would say that as of right now, and given the current economic situation, I think where the, the reserve fund asks, right now, it looks like it's going to be able to fund what needs to be funded over the next five years. That being said, it's also a catastrophic failure fund, so, you know, no idea what could fail on us in that, in that little time in between. Um, but I would say that with regards to the town hall projects, most of that is, was planned to be funded through ALFA. And that was kind of a lot of the on this, on this presentation, is just to getting the issues as I see them currently in talking with the, the users of this building, you know, what we need to kind of attack, and what the priority should be for that. I know we don't have a board here today, but I just wanted to get the conversation started as to what is planned, and whether they, we have a specific meeting to go through on, you know, what those projects are, and how much capital funds we have left, but I know we're kind of getting to the end of our timeline on that funding. So it'd be nice to get those things committed for the, you know, whatever projects the board needs to be the highest priority.
Uh, do you, what do you, for most of those, mention that any guy, you have a contractor or no?
So when we, we had a teleconference with unitil, and uh, we sent, well, I had to take care of this presentation first, that's the next one, but we have basically sheets on every building of the heating system, and they need some energy usage reports, so we're getting that all together for them, and that should be going out beginning of this week. So from that, that's when they're gonna determine who the right contractor for is, is how involved it needs to be. it needs to be and that kind of thing. So we're just going to fill them in our statements. Okay. What else? Does the rec center, did they have an idea on that or is that? You mean that pavilion with lots? Um, yeah, that's got to be on there. I actually saw that as a flip slide, but that is one of the ones that will have to be worked out. I guess we've had the issues there. Yep. And so this, what we wanted was some projects there, not to add another one, but I didn't see on the other generator account, backup supply. Yeah, that would be a good one for the long term. Well, so did we talk a few weeks ago about possible grant for that? Wasn't there available something we thought, possible grant funding for? I thought there was something between the projects. I think that could be, yeah, that could be a hazard mitigation grant. And I, when I was reading it, I had to make sure that, because we're already in the hazard mitigation grant application process for the Main Street Bridge, but what I had heard, and I was in on a teleconference on Thursday, is they said, it doesn't matter how many projects you submit for, they'll keep taking the applications until the money is gone. So I was under the impression that Kingston only got kind of one shot at it, but that is one of the ones that we can apply for.
Nice job.
Thank you. Thank you for, it was a nice job. Could you maybe do up some high copies of that? Yep. Just a few of these files. Yep. I'll figure out how to, I'll just get a data stick and I'll give it to Susan so she has it, anyone needs the digital copy. We'll just show down the list, if somebody wants to look at it, we can go back and refer through, go through the whole, the movie. Absolutely. All right, thank you. Department heads, Friday, we're doing some management, is that first today?
Well, quick, building committees having a meeting, the fire station building committee, thank you for extending our time, getting next month to finalize the project and spend some final funds on what has yet to be done. And hopefully we can kind of close out that. I want to thank the board for approving the PO for the AEDs. They're on order. They will be here in eight to eight weeks or less. That will provide new AED for the police cars, library and plus, I read those. I want to revisit the credit card policy. I ran into it again. I understand that the board had asked Paula to research what back we get out of the credit cards. I totally agree with all that. I am just looking, it says in our card, credit card policy, a limit may be settled on credit cards by the board of select. So, I'm just asking that we raise it from a thousand to five thousand. People going to classes and things that need be paid with by the credit card. No, Paula, great, he leaves when I need him. Paula, money card has had some issues in the recent past. Paula talked to the credit card company, said that adjusting it to five thousand would not be an issue. So, I know Paula's not here for another week or two, but just asking if you guys can knock that one off.
I agree, yeah, you really have to be, so it is time for the safety of the public to have a motion to, for a thousand dollars, five thousand, six thousand. So, take a second. Do you have a discussion? Department heads, anybody have a problem with that? Anyone think so? All those in favor?
I have.
Both, hmm?
No, I'm back. Thank you, I appreciate it. Last thing I have, I heard Paula's going, she's enjoying the time down there. We talked about the free family kind of cookout, and that was being planned for 29th, and she will have, July 29th, I'm sorry, July 29th, and she will have more details when she gets back.
That's it? All right, that's it.
Thank you. We have your highway safety, Brian came a few months back, he was again doing highway enforcement on the, on one of the, classed out to the bar into, no D W Is and skaters. We got grant, was also offered an opportunity to give a raid out, raid house system, a handout, which came in perfect timing because the one that we have is probably about 20 years old, it's a tiny bit hard. It's 20, I gave you a PO for $2,436. They will match 75% of it. So, we're only going to pay 575 dollars for that system. And the PO is, we'd come out and be able to see detailed. So if I get that signed and if you guys approve it, I'll get it ordered. It's going to take about two months to get it from the bank, we'll just get it. And I need a vote on it, and I'll need a copy of minutes to send the application.
So it's a grant?
It's a grant.
Seventy-five percent grant.
Correct.
So, we can accept that we had a teleconference, but I'll need a vote on to approve the purchase of a
I have the application, I have the application there. Make it cash. I'll be down, I'll need check signature on, on one of those.
Is the vote that you need, a vote to apply for a grant? Is that what the vote is for?
Uh, no, it's just a, it's for the purchase.
It's for the purchase. If you might vote to apply for the grant.
So, any, I've done this a few times with the generator grant and the forestry grant, I believe. So anytime you get reimbursement from the federal government, they need the copy of the minutes and the signature, copy of the PO, there's a whole pack of papers that you need. So, I mean, you can apply, apply for a grant without the signature, but you're not going to get reimbursed without signature.
That's your, okay, about 25%.
So. So, can I have a motion?
Yes.
Misses for a reimbursement grant, any money spent will become, you have a detailed account? All those in favor?
I have.
Both?
Yeah, the only other thing I have is on Friday, mid-afternoon, my two newest officers were graduating, and they're starting full-time Monday, right to work. So, I'm very happy they're doing really well. That's it.
That's great. Department of Public Works, can't come up with much more here, friend.
Always, always, I'm going to talk about the works.
We are, everyone looking to clean up, just kind of patching everything back together from the ground. Just see the guys out there doing fireworks. And we have done the dirt roads, they've all been patched with the spring. There is supposed to be a presentation to the board on that matter coming up. Right, Susan?
Yes. I forget the date now, it's going.
Me too. Make something. And then we'll be going out. We haven't been doing much tree work lately, numerous other things going on, but if I told you that we're going to clean up the tree or take care of something there, then we'll be getting to it soon. Like I said, we worked on the boat launch grant, and just still trying to get some numbers together on that. It's been pretty hard to get the actual grant portion of it priced out, so that's been kind of the sticking point. And so we have taken over the cemeteries and the cleanup in there was completed last week. We also took a stone restoration class that we're hoping to utilize on specifically the plains, with some of the older sections of our cemeteries so that we can get any of these gravestones that either have been permanently damaged or in danger of being damaged, taken care of, and just kind of taking a little more pride in our cemeteries and our heritage there. So, those are the big things we have going on, and then everybody's kind of spread with the forewinds doing training on this. And as I said in my previous meeting, I would say again that I am definitely going over my training line item this year, so the board's aware.
Code enforcement, and Jess, we'll say just for those who don't know, Dave Field has been temporarily appointed as the assistant health officer to, to keep up with the health issues, subject systems, et cetera. And he and Jess will be working on those, that we don't get too far behind there. Jess?
Okay, Dave and I are doing that right now, going through subject designs and things like that on that side of it. And then with the building department, we have a lot of permits out there right now with additions, remodeling, things like that. One of the things I'm working on is trying to simplify our system, our application process. And so working with Dave and Tom on that, and I'll have something for the board to look at probably next month, so that we can look at that too, what we can do there. As for code enforcement, we have working with two residents right now where we have nuisance issues. And that's going well, I'm working with them to go okay. That's about it right now.
Did you ever look into the fire station?
Oh, I can address that, sorry. So, we did have a member of the DPW went down with the electric truck and adjusted the front lights. I think it makes a big difference. You can't, you no longer see the filament from rocking wood. So, I've heard any culminators went complete.
Okay.
We fixed that. That's good, thank you. And also Paula was the hen Friday, she should be back tomorrow. We're going to have a meeting to talk about his story, his selling.
As far as I know, there are two primary issues there. One is the status of finding trees, which planning world is dealing with now because the last deadline has passed, and we need to figure out what the status of that is and how we're going with it. The other issue is to confirm whether or not the lighting on the exterior meets the lighting ordinance. Kind of a similar situation to the fire station, but that needs to be looked at.
Yep, we'll talk to him as soon as he gets back. He returned my call, he's happy to confirm that.
So both of those things are things you're going to be checking?
Yep, the block around the light.
That's about it. Human Services?
Things have been pretty quiet from an application standpoint. The food pantry's been very busy. We have a trust to help pay for that, which is great, but it has to do a lot of shopping. We brought the newcomers in the pantry, felt a lot of the donations too, so thank you to everyone out there who has been donating. And then the only other thing I have is I'm helping with payroll this week. So just get in your time sheets, you can send to Paula, do access to it as well, or he can send us week. But it feels like I'm a part of the campaign this week. That's it.
Questions, Chair? Yes. You mentioned that there's a need, you're doing a lot of shopping and so forth, you're getting donations. Are there particular thing, a thing or things that you really need for donations that, we are televising this, so if you, if you have something you're looking for, you might want to just express that.
Sure, sure. I do update the website regularly with the list of needs because it does change and stuff comes in. Recreation has something up and the library does as well. And I do have a Facebook page, Human Services Facebook page, people welcome to join, and I do post it up there as well.
Okay, and that list of needs is updated on a periodic basis?
Every half a week, yeah.
You ready, Chris? Well, we, okay. Town clerk?
Good morning, everyone. I first would like to thank Graham in the fire department in the related facilities for hosting the ladies clinic. It was very well attended. We actually, the county clerk's office was there and we registered those dogs when we were there. We still have 567 left to do by the end of this month. So anyone that has a gun, has a license, please, please license your dog. Deed notice was set up. We still have two parcels that are in danger of deeding. We will be deeding on May 9th. Hopefully, we will not have to deed these properties.
Do to me, is my turn?
We also set out 56 window visitors, they're going out on the 18th. We're going to execute the lien on May 24th. This is for any taxes that haven't been paid from the 2022 levy. So any taxes that were due last year that haven't been paid, we're deeding. And then two years later, from the 23rd, we will deed. I attended a tax collectors conference and the D R A gave me a copy of a permit file. Several things are missing from that file. They list different dates or different things that we have that we have been voted on, and several things are missing. So Susan and I talked about it, and I'm starting to gather that information, and we'll provide that to the D R A to update our permit file. And on May 3rd, the town clerk's office will be closed to attend our town clerk's conference. And we are really looking forward to still opening up our windows so that we can wait, have three windows to wait on customers. Because a lot of times you don't have the staff, but not the way to wait for people. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Operation?
Uh, good morning. Uh, I want to thank, uh, which I don't think I've done before, for making fire requirements, because there's a very, very nice job, so with the average housing, the fire department, police department, thank you for working with the, helping us with the two A guns and the, what was it? I guess that was it, the two A guns and DPW for cleaning up the driveway there, that was very helpful. We had a form issued over that H Bentley survey, that was on Thursday, so a few guys were there. I don't know if they'll ID that, but that was very helpful. I have some ideas about things that I want to do with the rec center from that. So that was really well attended and I think very useful information. The adult exchange went, went very well, coordinating with the draft house. And we made almost $1,800. So we're going to buy a couple of benches, hopefully two benches to go up on the new grassy area up there for probably one next to the court there, for people to sit while people are playing. And then somewhere in the field, kind of get the idea of people being able to play, the kids play there, overplay there, and have some, somewhere to sit during that. My biggest thing, which was referenced before, is pickleball. Pickleball has grown, I, my old boss used to say, we're fixing the plane while we're flying. And we, I think we got a little ahead of ourselves in terms of numbers and stuff, but it, it's great. I mean, there's very few problems. People really enjoy it. We use the Swayze gym, we have the rec center being used six mornings and six nights a week for two or three hours up until camp, obviously. On the thing that I'm into is there's a couple of players that have, what I think we need is a code of conduct, I trust Glenn a little bit about this, but we have a couple of players who seem to have cast sort of a dark shadow on either one particular day or just in general. So I think we need a code of conduct, which is fairly easy to come upon. Glenn helped me with a couple. They're, I mean, they're very similar in terms of how they want, how we want people to act, which I think is, you know, just being polite, you know, observing the rules, not saying nasty things to people, things like that. What they're kind of short on is consequences for that. So, if you call somebody a little violent, or if you scream at somebody across the room about, you know, something, or you scream at a particular person that's trying to organize it, that's just volunteering their time out, and they get screamed at. So it really, and it is, it is sort of dark shadow in some ways, that there's people that, they're the player that others really don't want to play with. And it, and it makes it kind of negative. Same thing I say to my counselors is, you know, 99% of the people playing are having fun, doing, you know, meeting new people, playing a game, have a great time. It's that 1% that I hate to focus on, but I think, I think we do. So I'm just curious about potential consequences. We kind of did our year from September to September, and the indoor at the rec center is going to end in a little over a week because we're going to get ready for camp, so that will, and they'll just use the outdoor one. And Swayze, I'm not sure how long that'll last, I have to talk to athletic director at least. athletic director, at least probably through the beginning of June. But one of the things for that, as you can hear, how many, how many times they play, I can't be there. And that, they, they play for more than 20 hours, which is my contract, and I wanna do more things than just pickleball. So I can't be there all the time to regulate this stuff. A lot of the stuff comes to me. I've never witnessed anything that's bad, but it comes to me from a player or players complaining about something. There's one particular person that seems, seems to stand out. I wonder a little bit, sort of, for a gang mentality, where it starts to get, everybody's sort of, oh, you know, like a rumor mill comes along, and I don't want to be unfair to them either. But like I said, I think we do have to have consequences. And when I go through this in my mind, thinking, well, you know, maybe some kind of, you know, warning, and then maybe a suspension, maybe it really keeps going, not, not being able to return, but what do you do if they come? I mean, am I gonna call a lease and say we can't be here? Do I revoke their, you know, liability later? If they find the code of conduct and say that, you know, that's out, can they only play one on there? So I have gone through a lot of different scenarios in my head to try to fix this, and I've talked to some people, talked to Glenn has been very helpful. But I guess I'm looking for some guidance and some thoughts about that, maybe there's been similar issues somewhere else that we can learn from or whatever, yeah.
Paul, first of all, kudos to everything that's been Easter Day for the kids, for the dolls, for all the kids. You wore 20 hours of the week out living. I know you need to go a little bit, but something is better. You told the recreation account, the field use and all the other stuff. There's a little league that coordinates, it's an adult softball league that coordinates, there's a football league that coordinates. You just say, yes, you can use a field rule, that's what you do. One, and this is a fault to you, but I don't think you should be getting fat on the knees of pickleball. Maybe you need to look at pickleball people saying, you need to set up. And you're gonna say, if a little league does it, you don't softball league, and then take it off your shoulders, you're being sued by this. And it's a big thing, it's good for the residents, and you've done a phenomenal job, don't they? It's still talking about adding pickleball courses in the winter, that's all great, that's where you were, I think you should stop. I think you need to look at pickleball people, and they need to set up, you need, we, as a board, should be saying, no, we're done right now. You set up a league, and then you come to us, because this, I don't think this is on your work here. I really don't want, you may do a phenomenal job, but you're being sued by this, and you shouldn't be. Look how we does this.
Right, I hear that, and that, and, you know, my part of the rec department too, to see what works for that. And the, the ones I've talked to, Grant Wood and Exeter, the ones I know the best, seem to have somebody like that, that, you know, they have two volunteers that are, you know, they apply the rules. And apparently, at least the insects are intimidating enough that nobody breaks them. So, again, but I don't, I do, I do have people that help me.
I think it's hard to create a, any other sport that's, I don't think you should get a lot of league. I think, I think maybe the tireless report would say, stop, you guys, down here, a, you know, question is for money, and organizing, and that goes, it's you, and it's no different than the pickleball, no different than the league. So, but again, we need to liberate the code of conduct.
The question is, we, I, it's just, even right now, if somebody's like, that much of a problem, and you know about it, even though you're not there and other people are complaining, you, in my opinion, you need to post it, of course, since we don't have anything learned, um, right now. Post it, say, if it happens again, we can't come back.
Okay.
And, and answer the question. If the guy, a person gives you some, got less, so, having officers, I mean, how, that's going off the proper, I mean, you just, you don't need to take the aggravation. And where other people, it's a mere feeling, how plain it don't feel, but just, it shouldn't be told about it. And for right now, my opinion, I would just ask them directly.
I think it should be not you. I think there should be a president, a vice president, or a commission, a vice commission, and they should have a law board, and they should be like, telling the players, no, you're not you.
Right, I really don't want to come up, yeah, I get it right now, when you have to do that. The fence next week, when we're gonna set up again inside, till, you know, September, I could just, December to work on things, the indoor, and how if we can control that outside, probably would be different, but.
But we also, with Swayze, a lot, I think, one of the problems is that this person that's under the dark shadow, is a very intimidating person. What I, my personal complaints, I call all the practice and say, what happened, I'd like to, information. And this particular person has denied any wrongdoing of, you know, and it's not major stuff, but it takes away from the fun that recreation is supposed to be. It's not a competitive league, we're not, you know, making money or trying, trying to, you know, whatever, it's just supposed to be fun. If you're, it's the same really, I have other kids, if you're, if you're taking away fun from somebody else, that's not okay. If you don't want that fun, fine, since they're gonna do that fun, but you can't take away from somebody else's fun by yawn and screaming, and you know. So, and another thought is, I thought, you know, maybe we just don't have that, so I, I think it would be difficult dealing with that person, and the woman that does most of the work for me. The gentleman that does it, when we won't deal with this particular person, I'll just avoid someone across the run, you know, does pretty good job, but she just sort of listens to him. That one doesn't really, and I, and I feel that way, that she has to take part, so I wonder if it's just being offered. But when I talk to other towns, even Exeter, you know, as much as they have, they don't have six nights and six mornings of that, they don't have that much. They sometimes have a league for, or a group for, you know, eight weeks, and then another eight weeks, and, you know, that kind of structure, so there's no structure to it. Yeah, I mean, we have structure, but it's, and we have a way to sign up and stuff, but we definitely do better with the structure.
Would you mind, like, gallows, you can, you can commit a request a no trespass order, we can serve that no trespass order and keep them off the property if it comes to that. So, just so you know.
I still feel that, yeah, I'm sorry.
You can commit the PD, you as the department, we could be at your back. Come on in, if you want the individual removed currently, or whatever, how long you want, you commit it to a no trespass order. And if you wanna lift it later on, that's fine, that's up to you.
Okay.
We can serve them and keep them off the property. If he's that much of a citizen.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, it's not, you know, he's not punching somebody, but it's, it's that cloud of, just, it's got some offense to take down, and there's people that aren't going to, you know, when he's playing, and there's big courts over there, and they're not going, and that, just because of that's becoming, and I don't want it to become this huge issue, because it's, I don't think it is yet, but it definitely is big enough to bring up to you guys, I think, to see. But I, I mean, I can definitely look at the setting up, the, you know, commission or whatever, the president, vice president, that kind of stuff, and they, you know, and I think the code of conduct we're talking to is right now, the really isn't, that's just sort of, you know, be nice, kind of thing, so.
And I, I just, sorry, I think code of conduct for the building, right, for the entire rec department, not just for pickleball, is, you know, if you have the PD, it has their, and the mall there, the same type of thing, but whatever, that, you know, if, if we're screaming and hollering outside, that, you know, we're gonna be asked to leave as well. So it's code of conduct, it's not specific to pickleball, but anyway, the use of our facility.
Yeah, and, but for camp, we have free roads, and it covers every, you know.
Kids are easy, they're just, we need a few more. If you love to camp, you can have the summer, and, we have a couple of times, I mean, I can, I can see that they're not always easy, but they, 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 kids are not easy, but.
Like, I think there should be a code of conduct for recreation and recreation programs, whether you're in the building or not. You're gonna feel trapped, if you're at Swayze, if you're on people's work, there should be a code of conduct, I agree. And people should sign up, and saying that they, they will abide that.
We'd say the other side is just setting up a review mechanism within that league. So if someone feels they're being treated unfairly, or seeing without interest, those people that are five feet away from you wouldn't believe anything, you know, the violation, or whatever society, that kind of thing, totally.
Yeah, just in turn, we, we.
You're both sides, I can tell.
I'm just saying, let them deal with it internally.
Right.
For somebody that would be, hopefully, neutral, and you're both sides, and then say, this is, this is a real ring.
Yeah.
Glenn, you have a question?
It was just a comment, and Paul and I have been looking at some examples from both of this area, as well as around the country. And a lot of the, with regard to pickleball, they follow the USA pickleball sole format, and there's the national organization, and it's very reformalized and structured. And a lot of the codes of conduct, which are not just code of conduct for use of the facility, to pose there the facility, but there's actually a document that you sign, and it has all things on it, and you sign it, and they agree to abide that, all these things, right? Signing, dated, and just by virtue of having somebody do that, I think it puts a level of information to that individual that they might think twice before they act in a non-appropriate way, perhaps. So I think that alone probably controls some of it. It will take care of all of it, obviously, and then some of these other steps can be taken to deal with the one offs.
Right, right. Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it? Let's grab our heads, except for two things before we run. Phil, you've got the flyer, I need to go. It's standing on, but you're here in the middle of it.
Yep.
Everybody was saying that the flyer, that he was ready to go to the tax booth, and I assume, tell me, does it have a?
Thank you.
It doesn't have yours, it's down there yet.
That's my check.
That's quite a good.
Yeah. So I just asked him, because taxes are due July 1st, which is Saturday, and the 3rd is a Monday, so we will be open on the 3rd. We have to be open to collect the taxes. The 4th is a holiday, which is Tuesday, but I am gonna close early on Monday, and I asked him to put that.
Oh, right.
So we are closing at 4 on Monday, so if someone comes to pay their taxes at 6 o'clock, I'm not gonna be there.
The verbiage that's been made is very important. It, it explains everything. It's long, but it's very important. My only concern, as I start working for the visual of what's recyclable, what isn't, and I might see it all on one page, and I would caution, maybe we put a visual verbiage, and then the verbiage, so that they don't just see all this white over there. But I, I looked at it, and I'd like to see it short, not too convincing, because it explains everything, but Stacy wants to talk.
I get 10 minutes, I'm sorry.
Say again?
I get 10 minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, we're, that's, and then the page will be a one letter, a one page. And we can fold it to the, and we can fold it to, fold it to make it see that.
Yeah, but then you make, make, a different font, big letters in the bar, I'm saying, down bar, maybe a whole bunch of, better size, so I can see this.
That is fine. The other thing, they can revise the letter, and then the only other thing I asked was, we wanted to include the total amount of what we're paying for trash recycling a month, so that we could tell people.
Would you tell people who you are first?
I'm sorry.
Or, I should have done that?
Stacy Dunn, chair of the solid waste and recycling committee.
Thank you.
And I heard Stacy, having people knowing that we're spending over $50,000 a month on trash and recycling is important, and by the end of this five-year contract, we're gonna be spending over $900,000 on trash and recycling. So this is becoming a huge problem. We need to get everybody working towards reducing what we're putting in the trash, but just all that needs to require some consideration now. It's not just put it at the end of the road, and then this disappears. It has a financial impact. One of the ones, financial impact, close to school always will have that mantle, but it's, it's bringing up a distant second. So it's just something that we can affect positive change on and affect property taxes if we do that.
It's currently 10% of Kingston's budget, and if we go to the million dollars, it will be more than 10%.
Going, going down the list, bags, very first one, toothpaste container, something around, pick dirty paper crates, bags, what's the other picture?
Um.
And then, oh, the middle one, what's this picture?
Paper bag.
I have no pictures of what we, that's what we.
Uh, paper bag.
Milk balls.
Milk balls.
Milk balls.
So anything that is smaller than two inches can't go into the trash, because how do you look at the trash and go into recycling?
You might want that picture, and it was the middle or the next one.
That's shredded paper.
It's what?
Shredded paper.
Shredded paper, okay.
So shredded paper cannot go in recycling, it has to go into trash.
That's the, because everyone, one of us thinks shredded is recycled, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a big.
Shredded is heavily emphasized. Yep. Yeah, and the other thing is, like, milk, cardboard containers or folded containers or has some wax on it, they are actually not recyclable.
Those, those two pictures, I think, maybe if you could find that picture, because I can, yeah, this was a PowerPoint presentation that we're gonna do on the cable channel, Stacy figured it was around, and we tried to squeeze it into one sheet, so.
One page.
No, I know, I can see, I got that picture, so I'm glad, I can figure out the rest.
I can do that now.
And the plastic film, this is story, and we took a tour of the material recycling facility in the warehouse that Waste Management takes all recycling to. And I took pictures of the entire process from start to finish, and there was the plastic bag wrapped up in every single piece of machinery throughout the entire process. And the whole thing is dedicated to getting those out in the process, and then we wrap where they have the big veins and everything, and there was a plastic bag in every single type of veil. I mean, it just, that's one of the things that I think would be very easy for people to stop doing, and it would help us out immensely. The, the library has a collection point for the grocery store bags, and if I was just gonna go, we'd take it to the grocery store, we'd go.
I personally think that in order to help this situation, we need to deal with the answer.
Jeff, Jeff, you wanna introduce yourself?
No, I'm sorry, Jeff Landis, my name is. And same matter, we need to get into schools, because if kids are recycling at school, and they learn those things at home, and they'll say, oh, mom, oh, dad, no, 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 that's what they're doing, they say, oh, oh, you need to recycle it. I, I saw a poor kid when I was at basic, 13 years. They recycle, and the kids move it, and they would say, oh, no, we need to do it, oh, oh, yes, they have to do that. So I think we really need to get into the schools and say, this is the recycling plan we have to come to, and of course, that means going to all schools, that's the memorial schools, we have families from Kingston and Memorial School, and we have families at big schools, but to me, that is a prime place for the type of educational process.
And that is one of the targets of this solid waste and
And that is one of the targets of this Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, is to do education, and that's one of our primary aims. The big thing, though, is just getting misfigured out with Waste Management, what is and is not recycling, because it's very convoluted. And it took, I believe, the slide that he sent, it was like forty different slides, just getting them to yay or nay, yes, we take this, no, we don't. Because we would ask and we'd get three different answers. So part of this was rewriting the, not rewriting the contract, but explicitly explaining in the contract what they would take. And now, now that we've got that part done, we're working on the informational part of it.
Does Newton have Sam Rose's list?
No.
Probably not, no.
Kingston is the only Waste Management customer locally right now, so they hide the schools.
Well, and the schools are sustained recycling program, don't they? I think they do something different, too.
Yeah.
But still, educate these kids.
So she won't have to do Kingston and everything to...
In my house, I have a recycling machine.
But yeah, that's, we've talked about getting in their newsletter, their email newsletter that goes out, and that's definitely going to be one of the...
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Thank you. So basically, we don't have a fan of the insert, and they're waiting for that. No change, that work, 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 change.
Yeah.
We're okay with the letter.
Yes, and with the photo, you say that the pictures are on the outside, so if you pull it out of the envelope, you see the pictures right away. If you see the words right away, it's just going to get tough.
And you don't need to fold it, we have a folding machine.
So your flag, it's...
We see yours.
Somebody...
Yes.
Take your counter, the sides, counter, all in some sort of standout.
Yep. And just as a reminder, May fifteenth, I need the warrant.
From you.
So the next Solid Waste and Recycling Committee meeting, and the couple of folks' building is on May ninth, eighth.
That's second.
Second Wednesday, oh, second, second Wednesday of May.
Yeah.
Whatever that may be. And that's where we're going to be finalizing this, but we just want to make sure we're on track. There shouldn't be any James, or any pictures of nipples, and something else, write a picture. And...
And tell us your team, I'll get the exact version tomorrow.
Alright, thank you. And Mr. Chief, you have a, a request for the board test?
My associate, can you do this?
Yeah.
He was clear, I guess, yes.
I guess my question to the board is, are you wanting to sign off before the police are ready and the fire chief is signed off on?
Yeah.
Both of them, they're not asked to go and sign?
Yeah.
And Phil wants to say no, so...
Usually, I think we sign first before, so to your...
Should, should be...
We should be the final.
Correct.
Initials.
We have already...
Not that science, it's a little bit...
Four parties, yeah, four parties. We need to have, so Chief, I can tell.
We're not a bit...
I may need to say one more. Alright, so...
So the answer to your question, Mr. Swagman, the answer in plan, I don't know if you have it.
I didn't know that. I guess we're going to go, that's how I still work, we're convened to that, I believe. Alright, so the chief has signed it, so we go...
Two minutes.
Two minutes. So we need a motion, I left, we're on?
Yes.
I think Phil is still past signing it.
Oh, he's not signing it?
Yeah.
Phil's question's one.
Okay.
So was I, or then put it back? I would say we're fine, design that, I just request an authorization. What's dated the event, I'm sorry? Do you need, do you... Do you just, so we can start here, so we're not really using them?
No.
Just need to send it through, so... Okay. So next up is the, you guys were also, I think, this guy, they're... So do you put a card in there, or something? Did they give you two signs?
I don't think so. What does it say under...
Certainly, tell you a specific...
I think it's just someone that might be on the board.
Well, on the board, I just like to shade through Paul Wieski, and Melissa Wieski, Melissa from the library, and we keep, I don't know who else is on the committee. Government planning commission approached this board about the age thirty-four. And the board wasn't too supportive, but these individuals took it on themselves to form a committee charged with a survey out there, and it was immediately last week, on, and then changed it only to a ten, or, you know, every generation to a ten. I went there, I went there, I was amazed by the turnout. There was over sixty people there. They got pretty good response from the survey, and there were other towns, they had over two hundred responses. And they got the reads, they looked at it, and they come back to the board with a presentation that I thought was incredible work for small, dedicated Melissa people, and I just want to recognize Paul, rather won't say the last name, Paul Butler, Melissa Federico, Melissa Lanning from the library, we profit, I don't know who else is on the committee. I recall all the others, but those were, I think, the funnier ones. It was pretty impressive to go to and see. It was, it was pretty this way, all the service industries had deal, done, with the air, and gave a short talk, they had flyers playing out for people. That was the turnout, it was standing horribly in the community and the library. Yeah, the planning commission actually has a grant, and they're working with a handful of towns on this project. And of all the towns they're working with, Kingston was the most responsive, got the most surveys back, and it was the largest in-person turnout for the, for the event that happened last week. This is all because of people that did it. I think if all of us made it, we're credible, really good. I just want to recognize them for that. Here's some things. Stacy's here as a chair, but a couple of questions that came up. It has been half practice for Kingston Days, anytime there's a vendor or a division that's on the phone, that they, you, they have liability insurance, okay? And as the Kingston Days go, it's actually, they always can. A new group, CASH, came, approached Stacy, or the Kingston Days, we opened a CASH, and they had to regretfully go away, they don't have liability insurance.
Now, before Stacy, when they were here, and they were doing that, I was at that meeting, and I was out, and they were talking about, I don't know if they checked it, they didn't think they had it. They were going to talk to, we were in Primex, to see if there's something Primex had that recovered them for the debts, and whatever money was the, the rebound, or something like that. The loan, so we were, obviously, going to be brought to them. A lot of money from the debt, but I, did anybody, do you know that anybody checked at Primex?
So what I got back from Paula was it was, it should be a town policy on the amount and the requirement of having insurance. So we're kind of going in, we're searching different methods that they've done in Kingston Days in the past. So they would like every company or vendor to provide liability insurance and have Kingston written back, but there is the possibility of, if they don't have insurance, they have let them sign an indemnification form. So I'm looking from this board at the town to say, what is our guidance to anyone having an event on the planes, on what type, how much, do I need a million? Do I have to go to every single vendor that has insurance and say, "I need a million-dollar policy"? Or is it, you need to have some type of liability insurance, and what is that amount? And what, and do you need to have a special policy to name the town as a co...
Name, name insured.
Name insured, and if we're looking at opening up to craft people and to nonprofits, they don't have that insurance, so we, we kind of got a double policy going, and so I'm trying to get some guidance on if they don't have insurance, and if they're not an actual company, is an indemnification, a signed indemnification form, okay? And should everyone who's at Kingston Days be signing an indemnification form? Because even if you're naming the town as a co-insured, you still want the town to be indemnified if anything happens.
Well, and the other thing is, this was something for Kingston Days, but there was enough organizations local to stop claims that is basically telling people, just tell them, you don't need that. So I, I don't know, I don't think Paul was in a stock of it all. I don't know if it would feel comfortable, but I would, Stacy is pretty involved. I want her to call Primex and think about what is the best back to the town, and have her go back to us, because there should be an power policy, not just for Kingston Days, it should be across the board, to everyone.
Doesn't a special event form cover some of this?
Well, not on the back of your facilities, use it back, because you sent it recently.
Yeah.
Has a requirement, and it...
The language is in there.
The language is in there, and the dollar bills are listed up. But you say, you have an occasion, you say, no, you have insurance. Well, this, this that Susan's referring to is, is insurance, liability insurance, with the name, with the town as a named insured, for people, for people or organizations wanting to use facilities like the town, all the planes, or wherever that is, could be...
So this gets a little weird when you're talking about Kingston Days, because it's the town putting on the event, and then we're taking vendors, because when we're, we're part of the town, we're, then we're taking on separate craft people, separate vendors. So they don't apply for the special event form, they actually fill out a vendor application or a tax and application, and then, and go to our event. So since we are, so the information I did get from Paula is that we are part of the town obviously, because we are a town piece, we're not a separate auxiliary or anything else, so...
It's a town committee.
It's a town committee, so we are hosting this, and then we go out, we get vendors and everything else. And so my question is, is where, where does that begin?
So maybe in that case, it is different. And maybe your suggestion, Kevin, is the right way to go, that we should talk to our insurer to find out what their recommendation is. Yeah, because both the town organizations, okay, is sponsoring the event, so it's, you know, and honestly, I didn't want to say, because, great, you have food truck, you want to ensure that guy doesn't blow the plates up, or the clothes, or maybe whatever, that is, is a lax blowing person, saying, you know, gee, they got something, but do they have the whole thing? I mean, it does become a sort of, sort of, then it comes out of the eye, that, or, you know, do I really need liability insurance? But I think there has to be guidance across the board, so I, it's easy, I have taught you, I'm wondering if you will, but I'm just...
I, I can give it, I, I just really, like, you know, some answers, because we're putting out our, we're putting out our like a vendor sheets, and I'm like, we're putting minimum insurance at a million dollars, and I'm like, just, can everyone afford that? I don't want to say no to a craft person, or, and so we're kind of looking at, do what, if they don't have insurance, is an indemnification okay? But there's not a, except for this special event form, which isn't, which is kind of, they're not going that...
I can, I can send this to Primax, to the way there. Do you have what you used in prior years?
I do have, we revised a bunch of things, so we can send that, but we really want to kind of move on this, we're trying to get people to sign up now.
You should, you should kick, like, so you don't bring that up.
Well, I sort of, I, I think for events like that, it's a one, the CASH in particular, it's a one-day event, it's six hours, I would guess that an indemnification bar app is probably sufficient for that.
Okay.
And there, there are liability, of course, because a car could blow up or something like for any time, but, you know, there's a lot of people like that, who just can't, can't do that, even the small vendor, you know, they're not going to go, again, spend a thousand dollars for three days worth of insurance.
Exactly.
But Primax would accept the fact that we get the indemnification. That would be, my opinion would be okay in that particular case, but, and then, I think, like you say, down the road, we need something... I don't want to say that Kingston Days versus different, for something that, you know, the town is actually, like your party dancing, that give up the, right, the door.
Yeah, town sanctioned event, town sponsored event, could very well be a different situation than a, than a outside entity applying to the town to use those facilities. But again, I think we need to verify that with, with our insurer, and see what they recommend. But, I mean, you, you've got liability, liability on from a couple of different points, though. I mean, you've got, let's say, a vendor is on the planes. There's the issue of their safety, of their stuff and their people, and then there's the safety of those who are on the planes with regard to possible liability there, so it's... It's a little complicated, but... And just because, I think two different organizations doing different things, we should get clarification on this call, and, 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 that's what I'm...
And again, I think for, for now, you know, to get these people to be able to commit and sign up, we need to have something we can tell them, I mean, now, and then, you know, it's time for it, it doesn't work on the overall thing. Primax is usually pretty quick about getting answers back, and you guys know better than I. Whatever, if you work with Susan, you know, to get them, and now, you've got them on board, either, but, you know, officially, go through Susan and figure out, say, will they, will they take, you know, an indemnification for this particular group, or this, and this, hopefully, they will, you know, but, but Primax is going to, going to, as the world is, want, want, on the high side of it, and the low side, like themselves, and need to get the town.
Right, and then, and then, I'm guessing we should have everyone, whether they have insurance or not, sign an indemnification if they're a vendor on that.
I think that's part of the overall question for Primax.
That's...
Yeah, you, I think, you know all of them, because you know what you're needing from that.
Okay.
I, I think, I mean, Susan is often going to be the contact point with Primax, and yeah, it's the, the state, town code, and, and the district, and so like board, I mean, that's, but if she, if you go with her...
I'll, no problem. I think I have to ask them, so, yeah, reach out, yeah. I'll, I'll go see you after this.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Did you talk about the yoga on the...
I got it, I'm going to finish it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I mean, you're doing liaison stuff, yes. Uh, I have a... Let's see, I think I might have mentioned this one other time, there was a question from the Historic District Commission about digitizing of their records, which currently reside in personal residences of the president and president chair. And I spoke with Susan and Allison, and she said that HDC just needed to contact her and let her know, and then reach this to station.
Right in here.
Bring it here, and I've made that to them, and so they should be getting in touch with you.
Yep, yeah, I did hear from Susan.
I'm still going to follow up with Paula regarding the phone line at the museum, trying to resolve that. We finally figured out who this fire was, it's not, it's not block five, it's actually burst light, and then the pole's away, so that's, but trying to stay on top of that. Uh, what else did I... There was an HDC meeting between our last meeting and this one. They had their reorganization of the board, the current chair and vice chair would be the same. So Susan Prescott is chair, and Virginia Morrison's vice chair. They were, they were also awaiting the, the further communication from town council regarding their authority as a commission when dealing with applications regarding use and the impact of use and that sort of thing. Some of that documentation has come from council, and I believe there's one more that's still pending, so they're waiting on that.
Did they get the recent iPhone that she was going to send, something more condensed?
No.
Okay. That's why I knew that they're waiting for it.
Yes, there were two pieces, town council worked it into two parts, we got the first part, we didn't get the second part, and she said what's coming up.
She was so nervous, I hope.
And I think for liaison, and you heard that I have been working with Paul, I figured all my conduct issue, so that's on the board. I have something to bring up, but it's not a liaison thing, maybe I should wait until the other business.
I have nothing on conservation, as Ben mentioned about the budget committee, not the budget committee, we, fire, house committee, we are meeting, I think on the tenth of that, which you said, too?
I can, exactly.
Yeah, we are meeting, we are having a meeting, probably in front of me, to kind of post a lot of, and make some decisions, we talked about the trees, we have to do plenty of things and other things. So that's coming up. Hillary, obviously, gave us our presentation, and I'm sure we have more things to come. Fire department, I don't have anything on there. Budget committee, they did meet, they had their elections, same...
Budget committee, they did meet, they had their elections, same, same people, in the same offices. And what I plan to do, is that they have some interesting things that the budget committees have not done in the past, but as a part of their purview, and actually, what it says in the book, that they're supposed to do, and they can do, as far as, you know, six-month check on the budget, and where the meals, and how, where they did a lot of the work with actions, Paulson, this is nice to see, ahead of time, so we have something in November, you know, their ultimate stuff would be pretty good. So on the next agenda, I hope to bring forward exactly what they've got, and what they're looking forward to, the whole world, to look at, just to be aware of. And that's it, that's all I have. All right, is there any public comment? Nope, okay, we have adoption of minutes for April 17th, I'm assuming that it says two, that means-
We had two meetings on the 17th, I didn't finish the, so we just have a couple seconds.
Entertainer motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting for April 17th. Uh, no, just, there were two public sessions, yeah. No, okay, we have, we have a non-public. And I, 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 what states meeting under public comment, I did say that I use inappropriate language, and I'm sorry for using that. So, I realize that we don't do verbatim minutes, but you were reading a great, short, short statement, I mean, do you want that full statement reflected in the minutes? I do. I mean, it was a short statement, but I think that, you know, everything you had in there was, should be reflected in the minutes. Yeah. So I'll second that with the amendment.
I was in favor.
Hi. Was that for both, both the four o'clock meeting and the 6:30 meeting? Yeah. And your, your, your amendment was your, your amendment was your, for the 7:00 meeting, at 6:30, but were you also including the- No, 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 I was thinking, and what she reported, I didn't come to the second session, I think that was-
I think you're waiting for a little bit, just, switch out.
But your motion was for both the four o'clock meeting and the 6:00 meeting, with amendment to the 6:30 meeting.
Correct, correct. Okay, so there are any other comments from the-
I'm sorry, it's, it's a question, I was going to hear some stuff that we got at a couple of meetings ago, and I'm not, I don't remember discussing it at, at the board, and there was a lot of other stuff that night, and it's a letter April 1st from Vegetation Control Service, Inc., and it's related to spraying herbicides on power lines, but it's not for unitil.
It's not unitil.
It's natural undercurrent.
Right.
You did address that, the board was concerned, a load of health entities.
Yeah, and this one is outside of the-
It's not in the area of-
It's not in that zone that I could see, I'll double check, but, and I'll contact them, let them know that, if it's over, the protections are, can't, right?
Yeah, if it's, if, if, any of their spraying, the protections, it's for unitil use, just as opposed to for unitil, and, and same, same show, like, I, I, can I say, do a vegetation period, the spraying, you just let it use other, well, that's, it was the moving part that, that was, if, if the act was related to the act, so then, unitil has a process where anyone else identifies, either online, or other areas, whether it's act or not, that might be sensitive to the spraying, they can request non-spraying, those are necessary, as a separate thing, but our, our goal was just for the, because it was something that was specifically targeted at the organs, and we said that, and we pointed to the organ section.
Okay. That's it? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we do have Project Yoga, Sole Yoga, in, it looks like they're giving me a break, I said break, on Monday, June, June 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. I don't, what can we resolve about the money? I don't see that.
I mean, question, question.
It's a lot for a yoga class.
So we're not going to charge 15 hundred dollars for one day, so, in my opinion, we have to do that, but do we do anything, or?
I, I'll be honest, I mean, there, I, I would say, there, if Phil asked him to use the apapaya planes, or the heat, or the, I don't know that he uses that anyways. I thought the idea was to limit it, or to try to restrict it to this- Correct. Cross from town hall. Yep. And Phil's recommendation was, that the parking could be here at town hall, plenty of space. I, I don't see that- So then the only question was, were we going to charge, was that? I, I also charge a fee, and after that, I, they, you know, it's a, it's a, run out, or, really, do a new business in town, really, call a property company, I'd, I mean, even give 15 dollars and be right for- I think there should be something, so you could say-
Yeah, because even the church, we still have their, of course, they use the dance stand, too, but I think there should be something, but probably that fee structure needs to be fixed.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's not just a one-off, right, there, there's more than one. No, and you're just going to do one day, or I do it on the 23rd.
One for now, for instance.
And then let them see, but, I don't know, be, I don't know, someone's supposed to come back and fee structure. Well, how about, I'm going to recommend something, if we could talk about, when I, occasionally, that I happen to use town hall for a private event for a dance, it's a seventy-five dollar charge for the evening, and I would suggest that we use that fee. Last, I appreciate that seventy-five dollar fee, because the janitor has to come in, we are cleaning it up, we're emptying the trash, and do that, then you got, you use electricity, you use the heat, I get that, seventy-five dollars, you use some grass and plants, for, you know, I didn't have $75, I was at $25 per time, me, I, you know, it's just-
It's hard, yeah, it's where's the line between, I want to take my kids down and walk the dog, and I want to have people here, but it's, if she's making money on it, I should just-
It's a private business, make money using the town facility. I, I-
It's kind of the principle, I think, I mean, I would do a compromise, and say, we should charge them 50 bucks.
I'd be fine with that.
As a compromise, but I think, I think, it's more, it's more the idea of it, and it's more the principle of it, but it is the money, it's not a money-making.
Yeah.
Again, I don't really want, and I'm aware of the chance, you know, because it would probably be something that they was willing, technically speaking, you know.
Yeah, I think 50 would be fair to her. What do you guys want to do, and then we have-
The motion, to authorize the town to charge a 50 dollar fee for this application per use basis.
Second. Any further questions? I was in favor.
Hi.
Our first, our vote opposed. Okay, that's okay, that's, that's, to the, so, we'll take it for that. We have two POs here, one is, it looks like for call back, which is just, that's fine, but the other one I have a question on is the spraying, and I guess we've been paying them, was it quarter or something?
Yeah.
However, this is an OTO, and I just wanted to be sure-
Was that the mosquito?
Yeah.
We found that, I think it was on-
Right, well, I would check, I'm not having a problem with the O, but I would check the problem, make sure that it was something.
Yeah, because I think that might have been on Richard's desk, because it's, so I'm, I said, where'd this come from? I said, I don't know.
I, we got a contract, that, so, but this, yeah, that's, I just make sure that it was, was paid, has not been paid, I should say.
Yeah.
That's separate from-
Yeah, sign up, and then, yeah, you have a power, make sure it's not, yeah. Do we need any further clarification, going back to the yoga, the, to follow up for the recommendation, the part of the planes that we use, and the fact that parking will be here? I think as long as we tell them, it'll be okay.
I mentioned it to an email already, that's a condition, that they need to, the parking should be here at town hall, to avoid a-
Right, okay, maybe it's part of our, our, we'll communicate back to them, as given approval, we'll take, and also state, the part of the planes can be used, and the parking will be at town hall, just so that it's kind of all right.
Okay.
And we need assignments, could we not?
Yes.
Yes.
There's, there's only, oh, no, it's one of the places, so.
Another thing that we have is, we've discussed, and I'm assuming we can talk about this in the public, Torres.
What's that? Oh, oh, yeah, I just, I don't know what the process is now, your last step for that evaluation was to have your signatures, because we already talked about it, so that's why I left it in there.
So Torres' information is here, based on that, and we haven't done any of the rest of them, but since we did talk about it, it's, came up with a, we have to pull out a matter, and the two, the two, so, I could be, get one out of the way. Actually, no, that thing has to go, it's, yeah.
Goals?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, this is, this, we need to at least get the road agent to sign off on this one, too.
Which was that, the yoga?
The yoga.
Okay, no, I think that was his only comment, was about the parking, and where to be, but-
Could you find the signs from there? All right, any other information that we have? The discussion on the water testing results, due to Sanborn Hill, can't make the dates that we want, we have, Susan has rescheduled it for May 10th at 6:30, they'll be coming in to, I would guess, to gather the information that we have, and what's going on.
Which you should have, the guy, May 10th at 6:30.
Yeah, they're extending their time to get it into DES slightly, because it's supposed to be the 15th, but you should have a draft of that beforehand, I'll send it out when I get it, and then that'll be for them to help explain what it's all about, and what their recommendations are.
May 10th, I would say.
May 10th, oh.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, they got, they got, that's, that's-
I, I was going for the third, that's fine.
Okay, all right, that's a big difference, so, yeah, okay, that makes a big difference, that-
Had a lot going on in my brain this week, so. Right, so maybe, maybe I'll make sure that they're-
I want to have a meeting Monday.
Yeah.
Maybe, first thing, I would guess.
Right, 6:30 on the next meeting, that was on my attention.
Is, I guess that's a public meeting, that's, that's a public, but I think, I think, I don't know if, is DES going to be there, or just the-
No, it's just them to advise you on what's in their report and their recommendations, and then if you want to have a more, the public hearing later about this stuff, it's not, that's not the end of it.
No, listen, I, there's going to be a point where we have that council, and to talk it, with council.
Yeah, this is just going to be receiving information, if people are here, that want to ask questions, they can, but I think it's going to be, I'm advising, if we're going to go.
I would just say, we definitely need another meeting with council, and maybe DPS also, yes.
We're going to have the real, yes. The only other change I see here is, we're, we're working on the next meeting, we have the Wednesday, the 3rd, Kevin can't make it, so Susan's rescheduled it for May 7th at 4:00 p.m., which will be before the planning board stuff, right there.
Two of us, two board members, have obligations that night for meetings, Christopher, planning board, and me for, to be same committee, so.
So I, I don't have a problem with it, we just make sure that Christopher's got the meeting going.
Oh, he is, I had an email, so.
Is he waiting with you?
Yeah.
And your, maybe you can, what's your?
Yep.
Okay, so we're good.
4:00 p.m. next Tuesday, meeting for the bank.
That's the meeting in which we'll be discussing replacement.
Correct.
Among other things.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. 10:00, you were sure?
7:00, at 10:45.
I was in favor.
I, I.
Opposed?